Now that we have a full complement of commissioners here, I'd like to call to order this regular meeting for the month of September of the Urbana Park District Board of Commissioners. First item of business is to accept the agenda as presented or to amend it. I'm not aware of any suggested amendments.
A move that we accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? That carries unanimously. Moving on to public comment. And the chairs appear to be empty tonight. And as I understand it, there are no UPD staff introductions for the evening either. Okay. Move on then to the uptack report. And we've been provided a report. Were there any comments, questions about that?
If it's okay to add, I was just going to mention, we communicated with Brad Hudson, and he's agreed to be our chair for this upcoming year.
Oh, good.
So that's good news, and we're meeting with him and going over priorities. So he's very enthusiastic, and he's interested in coming to the meetings because it works for his schedule.
Oh, good.
So I think we'll have somebody on a regular basis attending.
Yeah, it's always a difficult thing to fit into some folks' schedules.
Right, that's what Ellen and I were talking, some it works for and others, an extra evening meeting is challenging, so.
Yeah, and it's not absolutely necessary, but it's really a nice thing to have.
The dialogue and the sort of back and forth. And I also would mention Carol did a fabulous job with her reports. They were just really comprehensive and very well done. Appreciate her service.
Yeah, it looks like a good group again.
It is. I think so also.
Okay, anything else on the uptack report? And the next item of business is our consent agenda. On the consent agenda this evening, we have approval of minutes from the August 2nd board study session and the August 9th regular board meeting. The receipt of the typical monthly reports from administration, planning and operations, and the recreation department. Approval of the monthly paid accounts payable, and action to accept both the July 2016 and August 2016 philanthropy reports and gifts listed with gratitude. Under our rules, if there's any one of these items that any single commissioner wishes removed from the consent agenda for a separate discussion and action, that is their privilege.
I'd like to remove the administrative report and the July philanthropic report.
Okay. So, and I would presume the July philanthropic report would go under old business?
We have two together, I believe.
We do have the two together, but you asked just for the July one to be removed.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, right. Okay, so July philanthropic report to go under old business, and I assume the administrative report is under new business. Okay. Any other items that any commissioner would like removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none. Is there a motion that we approve the remaining action items on the agenda in an omnibus fashion?
So moved.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded, and under our rules for the consent agenda, there is to be no further discussion. Let's take a roll call vote on this, starting to the right.
Aye.
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 And that carries unanimously. So, moving on to reports, we have financial reports.
Hi, welcome back. Excited to be here. I'm going to be discussing the August financial reports with you this evening. The first report that I'll be discussing is the fund balance report. And this report shows the receipts and expenditures for the prior 12-month period, the budget for the current period, and the preliminary unaudited results for the four months ending August 31st, 2016. The first page of the report is sum one, which is all funds excluding the capital improvements fund. Revenues for this period were $5,187,000, the majority of which was property taxes. We received the bulk of our property tax receipts in June and September. Expenditures were $2,595,000, and we have a surplus after four months. This means there was an excess of revenues over expenditures paid of $2,592,000. The net change in fund balance shows an increase in fund balance after four months of $2,592,000. On the next page, page two, this is what we call sum two, and this shows only the capital improvements fund. Revenues for four months were $65,000, and expenditures were $93,000. Expenditures exceed revenues at this time, which means that there is a deficit of $29,000 and a net decrease in fund balance of $29,000. Due to the bond cycle, it's expected that the capital improvements fund will spend down fund balance the first half of the year until the next bond proceeds are received in December. And just a side note on the bond sale, we are actually going to do a BINA hearing in the October board meeting, and we'll have the preliminary information about the bond sale from Sphere. I've already received it, so I'll present the relevant pages of that materials to you in October, but you can expect to have some movement on the bond cycle come October. So our usual process is if we need to have a BINA hearing, we have it in October, and then November is the actual sale, and then the proceeds of the sale are received in December. Okay. And anyway, it's not uncommon to spend down the, for there to be fluctuations in the fund balance of the capital improvements fund. We are budgeting to spend it down by almost $400,000 this year. We'll see if we meet that budget, but it just has to do with, as projects are completed, how it fluctuates. Moving on to sum three, this is all funds district-wide, and note that ending fund balance for the entire district was $8,446,000, which we expect to decrease as the year progresses. And I also just had another side note about the audit wrap-up. We now have actual preliminary financial statements that we're working with, and I can, I know, as long as there's no further changes, which there shouldn't be, that we added an additional $484,000 to the district's fund balance at the end of FY16. And that's incorporated into this fund balance beginning-of-year figure that's on this report. So the $5,882,000 includes that increase. So that's pretty exciting, since we were budgeting to decrease fund balance last year. So that worked out. And following this page are the summary reports for the individual funds, general, recreation, museum, and indoor pool. And if you don't have any further questions about those, we'll move on to the next report. The next report is the budget analysis with history. This report shows a historical comparison of the same four months of the current year and the prior three years. So four out of 12 months is 33%, which is a number you can compare to throughout the report to check for reasonableness. The highlights of this report include, this first three pages is all funds district-wide. You can see in the middle of page two that total revenues and transfers in for this four-month period were $5,328,000. And if you look across the prior three years, you can see that it's pretty comparable to, especially, last year's figures. But the nice thing about last year is we had already received this TIF reimbursement of $295,000, so you can see we didn't receive that this year. So our total revenues are doing pretty well, considering we didn't receive $295,000 of TIF revenues, most of which we're not expecting to receive this year, since that was due to the closeout of TIF III. So revenues are doing well. And you can also see full-time salaries, supplies and equipment, contractual services are all running ratably consistent with the prior three years. Full-time salaries, you can see, are a little bit less, and that's because we have not had a month with three payrolls in it yet, but September is that month. So it'll catch up to the others and be more comparable when we look at September reports. And on page three, you can see total expenditures and transfers out for this period were $2,764,000, with a surplus at the end of August of $2,564,000. Any questions? Moving on to the treasurer's report. The treasurer's report is the report of the amount of cash the district has on one day, August 31st, 2016. All 25 funds are listed with where the cash is invested, for a grand total of $10,378,389.4. Page two, the first section lists funds that are invested, and for, sorry, I just got off track. On page two, this section lists the amounts that we have in interest-bearing accounts. So of the $10,378,000 total, we have $8,587,000 out in investments, and those have changed very little from the last month's report. The next section lists disbursements. The vendor payments in this list match the paid accounts payable report on the consent agenda, and total disbursements of funds was $576,000. And the final section lists inter-fund loans. The loan between the English Fund and the indoor pool is a rollover loan for current cash flow needs at the indoor aquatic center. And I present the treasurer's report to you for approval.
I mean, we accept the treasurer's report for audit.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries unanimously.
All in favor?
Moving on to the supplemental report of cash. This report has the same information as the first page of the treasurer's report, but it groups the information by expected use rather than by fund name. So the different expected uses are daily operating funds, restricted special needs, and restricted gifts and donations. And you can see of the total $10,378,000 that we have available, $1,418 is restricted obligations, leaving $8,961 available as spendable cash.
I had a question here.
Yes, please.
On the land acquisition line.
Mm-hmm.
Did we put any new funds in that line this year?
We did. We budgeted to transfer $25,000 into the land acquisition. So at the end of FY15, we had $4,000 in that fund. In FY16, we transferred $25,000, and then in FY17, we transferred $25,000. And I transferred it early in the year so that I could lock it into the CD for the year.
Okay.
So it's in a CD invested with Abusi.
Okay. Does that look higher than I remember?
Uh-huh, yeah, it was. Good observation.
It was better to have more than less.
Yeah. So that's what we've got going on with land. Any other questions? Okay, I'll touch briefly on the areas that had activity in the capital budgets. In 2016 capital budget, this month, we had revenues accepted for memorial donations, and spending occurred on memorials, a portable auger in Operation Small Equipment, the Hickman Wildflower Walk project, and for a toolbox for M42. In the 2015 capital budget, the negative revenue that you see in the IDNR rain garden grant is the amount of unspent grant proceeds that we returned to the state per the grant agreement. Derek is working on a new agreement to complete the design on this project, so he may touch on that.
It's complete, yeah.
Great. And on September 1st, we also received the other $41,512,000, sorry, $41,512 in IDNR funds that we were expecting. And I've separated that into two lines now, so, because technically, the $535,000 was a grant, but the $41,000 is considered an intergovernmental agreement, and it's a different type of revenue source in the audit, so I separated it out into a different account line. So we'll just track those separately. We're going to spend them out of the same account line, because on the spending side, it doesn't matter. I just have to track it on the revenue side. And then also, retainage was paid out on the cottage project, and spending also occurred on construction crew projects. And just for the public watching at home, I've said the last couple of months, but the negative spending that you see in the Broadway Trail project is a revising entry for retainage on the project, which is a process we go through for the audit. So when that project is closed out, it'll zero itself out. That number will carry forward until the retainage is paid. And there was no activity in the 2014 capital budget this month.
My goodness.
Now Caitlin and Derek have some project updates for you, I presume?
Yeah, so we're basically into fall construction season, which is exciting and a little nerve-wracking. The best thing that happened this week is that we broke ground on the nature playscape. So for anybody who goes by the nature center in the next couple of weeks, you can expect to see it looking very different, that Deuce Construction is digging, currently digging out and putting down limestone gravel and compacting it for a six-foot-wide accessible pathway, colored concrete. We're going to do a tan, a sort of warm tan color to the concrete, so that it's not just gray, going through a very natural-looking playscape. So they're doing an accessible path and bench pads and some accessible ramps down into the play features that we're going to be constructing. They're also taking that first, that north end of the parking lot and redoing the asphalt walk that's there in concrete, so that it looks much better, and it's a more completed project along with the work that took place with the outdoor pool. So we're thrilled with that. They have a very ambitious construction schedule. They really, I think they're going to be pouring concrete next week. And weather pending, they anticipate being done with the whole thing in the first week of October. So as soon as that's done, we'll be moving in with our construction crew and our landscape crew to start installing the playscape features. So we're really very excited to see that in motion right now. As Katie mentioned, we got the funds from the state for the rain gardens that will be going into the nature center and pool parking lot as well. So I'm hoping that we're going to be bidding that out soon, in the next couple of weeks, finishing, as Derek said, finishing up the design on it, making sure that seeds, good prairie seeds and all the sedge seeds that we want to install there are available from the nurseries, and getting that moving so that everything has time to cold-stratify this winter. So that will also be fun. The Lille gazebo roof is going to be moving forward in the next week or so. We don't anticipate any interruption of services through the cottage or in Lille Park in general. There'll just be a little bit of construction happening around the gazebo. That'll be closed off for a little while, but they're a little behind schedule, but they're waiting for somebody who's artistic enough to do the work right, is what they told me. They're making sure that they have the right crew who can handle cedar shakes, because it's a little bit of a different project than your standard roofing, since it's that sloped roof. And so I was very glad that they had that attention to detail, that they wanted to make sure that somebody was going to bring some artistry to it.
It's not even a plane drain cedar shake roof.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's more flat there for more than, what, 20 inches or so?
Yeah. So that should be moving forward soon. Today, we, it was, it did not require board approval, since it's already budgeted, but we are going to begin engineering on the Larson Park tennis courts, working with Burns Clancy and Associates. And so we would expect that that work will probably be bid out in January for a late spring redo on that court, but we are going to move forward with that planning. We're also bidding, right now, we had plans at the beginning of the year and then kind of delayed them based on other project priorities, to bid out a new Bobcat skid steer. We have a Bobcat skid steer right now. We're going to be bidding it out as a compact track loader, so that instead of on wheels, it'll be on tracks, which is going to help our construction crew and other facilities crews get into areas that they can't in the wheeled loader. So I'm hoping, I'm hoping that that will be on schedule to bring forward to you guys for an October approval, so you know to anticipate that. And then last, we were really pleased to bring the Crystal Lake plan to you guys last week at the study session. We're making a couple of edits to it. We're also putting it in front of our staff and our stakeholder groups. But from that and from the comments we receive, I think that we're going to be looking at doing a first phase of engineering based on the priorities that we're establishing. So we're going to start talks with Burns Clancy and Associates about what that would look like. I don't expect that that'll be October, even necessarily November. It's probably going to take a little while, but getting the first phase of engineering done on some portions of it, more of the water quality. Obviously, the sediment basin is moving forward independently, but the rest of it, starting to look at the shoreline and some of the trails as well. Derek, do you have anything to add today?
I was thinking about that grant that Katie mentioned, just for y'all's clarity. That was a grant that we had a deadline on, but then the state didn't have money for us to proceed with doing the actual work. And so we put a pause in the design process, returned that portion which we didn't complete. Now we're going to bill it for them directly. It's a small amount, we're not as concerned. They did forward the full amount for the construction, which is the $47,000 that Caitlin mentioned.
Good, yeah.
It's a lot of work around with that, but that's how it works right now.
Yeah, we're lucky we got something.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Okay, then let's move on to the executive director's report.
I have a few things. Let's see, I was mentioning when we, folks came in, thanks to Derek Corky, we attended a walk as one. It was sort of on the fly. Both school districts wanted to do a push to get kindergarten readiness packets out there in the various neighborhoods. So we were working in the Savannah Green and Scottswood area, so we had a really good turnout. There were about 70 people at Prairie School that came together pretty quickly to volunteer to do that. So we did that this evening and got t-shirts and had the really neat theme that we really like, read, talk, play, which is kind of a neat concept, so that was very successful. Just wanted, since we haven't had everyone together, just thanks to all staff for the great summer we had. We had a terrific turnout at all of our camps. U Theater was very successful. Parks looked terrific, had several really well-attended events that went well. Our natural areas got lots of attention and volunteer work. Athletics really went all out with all their sports programs and things. Planning teams have been very busy. We've been looking at athletic fields and making some site visits. The audit work at the administrative office was pretty intense for everybody there, so really appreciative there. Jazz Walk went very well, very pleased with that. We had a terrific day. The event was postponed till Saturday, but we did have the foundation event. It was well-attended, given the weather. So that was a lot of fun and a good turnout. We're continuing to meet with the Brookins planning process. Our next step is to try to have one of our brown bag monthly meetings with the city, the school district, and the park district, to kind of see what potential each of those groups might have, what interest, what information might be needed. So we'll continue to work on that. Staff's reporting that the study we're undertaking on the underserved is ready to kick off, so the researchers are getting their work together, should be pulled together sometime end of the year. We have a nature play event Saturday. Michael might mention it in his schedule, but a lot of us will be there, so that looks like an afternoon of fun and hopefully fundraising. The Bear Event out at Meadowbrook, I think I sent a note out, if you haven't, a couple of, heard from a couple of commissioners on preferred dates, but if you're interested. We do have a limited amount of tickets, so we can't just, you know, hand out lots of tickets to everybody, so we're trying to work within that means and get, again, they are free tickets, so if you wanted to go again, or with more friends or family, you can go to Cranert.
Tim, I think they officially go on sale tomorrow, 10 o'clock.
10 o'clock, yeah, tomorrow, so if you're...
Does anybody know about this? I mean, I read the paper pretty carefully, but I don't watch TV. Am I missing information about it on TV, or?
No, I'm not exactly sure. The marketing plan, but assuming Cranert's getting the tickets in order.
That's the marketing plan. It's all going through.
They're going through them, so it gets in their publications. So I didn't know from the past ones they've had, they've been generally sell-out, or, so I wouldn't wait if you're, you know, looking for tickets.
It's in the paper.
Yeah.
Oh, I see.
I think there's a lot going on at the university within the various departments, so that's coming up very quickly.
Nancy, I also, I know about it because I, Jennifer Allen is one of my therapist, like, physical therapist, but, and she's one of the co-producers, but otherwise, I haven't seen a lot of advertisement.
Honestly, I haven't.
But yeah, but last time, the same thing.
I was disappointed that there wasn't more.
But I think, last year it sold out.
Yeah.
Our last iteration, which was out at...
At Allerton.
Allerton, so...
And the previous one at the Stock Pavilion, same thing. There were crowd lines lined up, so.
Okay.
I'm just making the assumption with the campus connection, there'll be a lot of people that'll be in line.
Okay.
And I'm pretty sure we have a blurb in the leisure guide that's out right now.
That's right.
Right, but, you know, people tend to look through the leisure guide, get themselves set up for classes, and then, you know, oh, yeah, yeah, and that just kind of...
It was primarily Deeks response. I mean, he was wanting to handle all that portion of it, and all the registration goes through Cranert, so...
We offered to help, but they seem to have a good handle on it, so we said, okay.
Or else they're not doing anything.
Right. I personally tend to rely on radio and some of those types of, you know, announcements, but maybe they're waiting until later. But I predict we'll have every slot filled for every performance.
Good.
So that's, I'd be surprised if we didn't, especially with the Meadowbrook connection, because everybody I've heard that's heard it's at Meadowbrook was very excited, because it's close. You can walk there, ride your bike, and it's easy to get there, so. We have a bike summit coming up later in October, and then the UPD Fall Staff Retreat is September 29th out at Lake of the Woods, so we're anticipating that. Have some training sessions and some just team-building exercises and some fun exercises, so we look forward to that. But I can answer any questions if you have any. That's all I had.
Okay, thank you, Tim. Moving on to President's Report, just a reminder, there will not be an October 4 study session. There'll be a number of staff members down at the NRPA National Conference in St. Louis, and perhaps some commissioners as well.
Yes.
Are you going up?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
Next regular meeting will be October 11th, and as Katie mentioned, we'll be holding a BINA hearing for the first time in probably three years now. It's time to be up and do another one of those. Review of the annual audit, always a fun and exciting thing. And action to accept the comprehensive annual financial report, which goes along with the audit, and review of tax levy options for the upcoming fiscal year, and perhaps action on a resolution determining the amount to be raised by taxation, which will affect what we have to print in that dreaded black box.
I have a quick comment. I went to a training at Parkland that Illinois Comptroller's Office put on, and they, one of the presenters talked about questions to ask your auditors about how the audit went. So I'm going to send those out to you, and feel free to use them as a list to get a dialogue going, because Greg is really great if he winds up coming to help present, and very knowledgeable guy, and it'd be great to have you guys interact with him.
Perfect, thank you. And that's all I have. Moving on to committee and liaison reports, Finance Committee, we did meet prior to the study session. I think we pretty much talked about what that already, and I believe we have another meeting set up, although it may not be until November.
September 30.
September 30, excuse me, the end of this month.
Right, almost up to November.
Yeah.
And that's at the cottage?
Yes, we did decide to go there, because our audit and basement work is probably freed up now.
Any other comments on Finance Committee, Bob?
No.
Okay. Moving on, Policy and Procedure Committee. I know we have one item that came out of that committee here tonight.
The FLSA?
It was the expenditure. I think what we did is communicated via email and got comments from both of our subcommittee members.
And Urbana Park's Foundation Representative, Mary?
I unfortunately was not able to attend the Jazz Walk pre-event on Friday, and we did not have a foundation meeting in August, so someone else would like to give updates on, I mean, you've mentioned it was a success at the foundation event.
Probably the, one change, I think we're really pulling things together for the website. We're trying to get that up. And the other part I want to go back to on the Crystal Lake, you know, we're working with the fundraising committee, and I know Steve's been pretty patient, but I think that's why staff's urging us to start getting our, at least for our three main pillars, which is, one is Crystal Lake, start getting some project information together, and so we'll get a chance to review that. You know, it's, we kind of know what the big needs are and some large dollars. How do we get there? We're not so sure, but we have to start putting information together. So I think we're going to try to put together what would appear to be a logical or reasonable approach, where there's things that could be named and, you know, identified some opportunities for, you know, donors to step up, and then likely an opportunity for just general donations to support that project or any of the other projects. So I guess what I'm saying in a nice way is we don't necessarily have the money in hand, but we have to start promoting, getting the projects out there. So we're going to take a stab at that. Certainly, we'll get to review it. Won't post anything out unless everyone's had a chance to look at it, but... it. But, so that's a little different than we have done things in the past, but we're excited. We think people will respond positively. So we're anxious and excited about that. I think the Finance Committee met, I was not, for the foundation, I was not able to join that meeting, but I think they had a positive discussion and moving things forward. So all the subcommittees are really starting to click. I think we're getting things up off the ground. So we're really excited to see some traction on that.
Fundraising and the Marketing Committee are meeting next week, Monday together, a joint committee meeting.
Right. And I think that's kind of been sort of a weak spot because the marketing people need, tell us what, how it's, what are we going to do? And the fundraising people are saying, what's it going to look like? How's it going to, you know, come together? So we're trying to join the forces and maybe make some assignments and get things really notched up. I think the big weight is, or not weight, the big anticipation is getting the website launched with all those opportunities out there. And then supplemental information if we're thinking brochures or leave-behind documents if we visit with people. So I think we'll probably see some exponential growth here with our materials and our approach pretty quickly here.
Okay, and move on to the Ad-Hoc Committee with UpDEC Planning. Has there been anything to report there?
We have not met. We've still been trying to have a meeting. I mean, there's been several emails exchanged, but nothing has been confirmed just yet.
You know, I think my impression is, you know, we've identified the programs for the rest of the year of what we'll be doing, but we're kind of work ahead, start to look, you know, what can we do, what things can we do that will make it better or new opportunities? So I think we're not, I don't think anyone's concerned, what are we doing next month? But it's sort of, where do we want to be in six months or in twelve months?
Yeah, we're the long-term, looking at, we're the ones looking at it long-term, right? Yeah.
And, you know, how do we best work with UpDEC? All the aspects of attracting, you know, more UpDEC members, keep our agendas, what are we doing, and what are priorities, and how can they help us? And so just really trying to work on fine-tuning and getting that in the best shape it can be. It's, like anything, if you don't make it a focus point, it'll probably stay where it is.
Okay, moving on to old business. First item there is action on change order number eighteen at the Crystal Lake Family Aquatic Center.
Yeah, so this is, you might, you might think this is a little funny to see this as a change order. You haven't seen a change order on the pool for three years, it turns out. What we're going to, what we're asking tonight is approval on some work being done at the stream bed feature. And we know that very soon after the opening of the pool, even potentially before it, it was noted that the feature wasn't working the way that we had intended, from a couple of different perspectives. For one, the concrete was very challenged by the weight of the limestone blocks that were around it, and also by the jointing pattern that had been installed. Additionally, it wasn't, people weren't playing with it quite the way that we anticipated. It wasn't holding the recreational value and attention that we had hoped for. And so in 2013, we actually left the original contract with Bourne Russo open with $500 left in unpaid retainage, so that we could come back when we were ready to do it and work on adjusting and improving the stream bed. So we've been working with Ratio Architects and Bourne Russo and local structural engineers to determine what improvements really need to happen there so that A, it is a stable, you know, feature that we don't have to worry about maintenance for anymore. And then also, like I said, enhancing that recreational value. So this is probably a larger number than you might have anticipated, that the cost is just under $51,000 for all of the work that we're proposing. And that includes the removal of the majority of the concrete that's in the stream bed feature, replacement of that concrete, and adding, I think, three or three, three additional spray nozzles into that, as well as moving a couple of others to make sure that they're not, one of them was spilling water kind of into the patio area. And so we want to prevent that from happening and are moving it more into the stream bed. This, the cost seems, to me at least, seems right in line with the concrete costs that we are seeing at the nature playscape. So it seems very apples-to-apples in that case. And the work that we're getting done, Westport Pools is going to come in and do the nozzles and the piping as well. So they're familiar with the project already.
The nozzle, the nozzle, the spray nozzles themselves, the ones that we're adding is where the hump was in the middle, where the water kind of goes around it. While we were taking that up, we're like, well, there's really, no one's playing on that. So that's why we decided, well, what if we put three nozzles through the middle to give it a little more effect through the middle of the feature? That's probably about $6,500 somewhere in there of the cost. And the rest is more or less returning what was cracked.
So how are we solving the weight of the boulders?
When the contractor here looked at it, he did some analysis, and he felt like it was not the mass of the saw stone that was contributing to it.
Oh, sorry.
He, it's, you know, the contractor really thought that was probably what was happening. But what he feels like is that there was inadequate jointing, that there wasn't enough saw cut joints. And that was a very conscious decision that was made through the design and construction process. We were all reviewing them. The, we felt like we wanted to avoid having too much water go into the slab, but in the end it bought some cracking that has continued to get worse. And frankly, I'm thankful that we waited until now because just this early summer, Tim was out and noticed more and more cracking. So we're catching it all. And that's part of why the cost is higher. Kudos to Bourne Russo. When Westport came back with their quote, it was higher than we had expected. And he worked with them to really get it back to what we had expected earlier.
Oh, nice.
They're really trying to, the Sky Sandborne, the project manager with Bourne Russo's quote was, you know, we're not looking to profit off suffering. So it's-
That's nice.
I'd hope so, since I sort of feel like this, how does something like this happen in the course of a design project? And what's the responsibility of contractors?
Right.
You know?
It's murky, I can tell you that.
Right, right, because it's a shared responsibility.
And it's that issue with all concrete.
Right.
So, ask the mayor.
Is Ratio contributing? Is that what I understand?
Yes.
Okay.
And all the redesign work that they've done for free as well.
Right. So there's cash and also service in hand, in kind.
So that's the $6,000 cash.
On top of the design work.
Right. So I think-
They are terrific.
Staff feels pretty good that we're able to keep the team together, get people to respond to the need, identify the problem as best as we understand it, get a reasonable price to get it fixed, and to get a reasonable schedule to make it work. That's often not how it works at the end. You know, most people don't want to come back, and it's kind of a struggle and finger pointing. And so I think right off the bat, we had at least some level of, okay, let's work together to, you know, from them. And we approach it that way, to say, look, we've come this far, we've got a great facility, we're happy, we haven't had any major, you know, a million things could have gone wrong. And so we're thinking, you know, this is the last push to get things fixed. After that point, of course, the rest is on us and everyone's obligations have been met. So.
Well, you know, you could have handled this in a manner where everybody was grumpy and nobody wanted to talk to each other. So I salute you for doing, you know, because it's not, when there's a problem, nobody really wants to take ownership of that problem. And so how to, how to approach that and keep everybody happy is, you know, that's the UN diplomat level of work. So.
Especially without involving the attorneys.
Right, we agree with that.
Absolutely. So congratulations for, I mean, I'm not surprised. I don't want anybody to think I'm surprised that we were able to do this. This is your usual way of doing things. So I appreciate it. I'm sure I'm not the only one who appreciates it.
I want to add one thing about the funding and the budgeting on this, and Katie can help me on it, that right now, the way that it is budgeted, there will be $20,000 coming from the outdoor pools renewal and replacement fund. And that's because that's the maximum that we appropriated to be used out of that fund at this time. However, what we plan to do is, we can use funds out of the Recreation Fund as, basically as cash flow right now to pay for the work, and then do a transfer from the R and R fund back into the Recreation Fund, so that ultimately the majority of it is being paid out of the R and R fund, just not the actual cash right now. And the appropriations, the revision to the Budget and Appropriation Ordinance won't happen until April of next year. So that's when we can make any adjustments for, for the future that we need to.
You said it perfectly.
And the one reason why we want to do it that way is we want to be able to track over the course of time what was spent out of the R and R fund, showing that it's doing what it was there to do.
Right, right, right. Yeah, and I like the idea of it, of money from that fund being used.
The R and R fund is a capital fund. It's actually a capital improvements fund. That's the fund type. And so to have an expenditure like this come out of recreation isn't as appropriate. And so it's fine to cash flow it from here, because that's where we have plenty of appropriations. And, you know, we have even like miscellaneous appropriation in addition in the rec fund for unexpected expenses. So, you know, it's fine to spend it out of there. But when the board revises the Budget and Appropriation Ordinance in April, is the opportunity that you can now increase expenditures in the R and R fund, and we'll have this expenditure ultimately come out of that fund, and so that it's a capital expense, but also, like Corky said, for tracking.
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
And ultimately, if this comes in without using any or all of the contingency, that will remain then in the R and R fund?
Yes. The contingency is mostly there because once we pull up concrete.
Who knows?
Well, hopefully not, hopefully we know. But, but there's always the chance that we might need to replace additional pipe as things come out.
Hopefully we won't find an old pool under it.
All right, exactly. There's a lot of taking out.
Well, I move to approve the change order number eighteen for a final amount of $50,959 with a 15% contingency of $7,644.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion or questions? This should require a roll call vote. All in favor beginning at the left?
Aye.
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 And that carries unanimously with all five commissioners voting. Moving on to old business, removed from the consent agenda, we have the July 2016 philanthropy report. And Bob, you asked for this to be separately dealt with.
Yes. My question is about the sponsor for the Strawberry Festival. Is that a normal sponsor we have?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
We've had, I think, Juicy and Health Alliance for multiple years in a row. And I'm trying to think if there's others. Do you recall?
Ratio has times passed.
Yeah, many times, not always.
Yeah, but Buzy and Health Alliance have been our staples for multiple years.
All right. I just wasn't sure if we had some movement.
Uh-uh, I don't think so, not this year.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments about the philanthropy report from July? Do we have a motion to accept this report with, and the gifts included with gratitude?
So move.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That carries unanimously. Moving on to new business, action on ordinance 2016-09, an ordinance annexing certain territory to the Urbana Park District.
We have property that is being requested to be annexed into the Park District. I think our practice and history is always generally welcoming for anybody that would like to do that. Might be a few instances. We might think otherwise, but in this case, staff would recommend this would be a good opportunity. Certainly appreciate that. And I can answer any other questions on that if you need it.
So it's not a retention pond?
It is not.
Okay.
Not till the grandkids get out there digging.
And that might be one, we might not necessarily suggest that if we had ownership responsibilities. But again, it's a positive step for us. So we think it's a good opportunity.
Any, any questions regarding this?
It looks to me that this is a very positive thing for the Park District.
I can comment briefly. I spoke to Sasha at the county, and annexations are due by the first of July to be included in the current tax year. So the City of Urbana, for example, they'll just do annexations on a rolling basis anytime they come up. And we typically group all of ours together and do them in June. And she says districts do it both ways, and it doesn't really matter. There's no reason to do it one way or another. It's just a matter of convenience and organization. So, so this annexation will not be taxable on levy year sixteen, which is the taxes that people pay in seventeen. It'll be then in the seventeen levy, which will be taxable and paid in 2018.
I'm just not sure how to make the motion.
No, do we say that?
Well, okay.
I move that we approve ordinance 2016-09 to annex certain property to the Urbana Park District.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further comments or questions? We should hold a roll call vote on this, beginning at the right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 I think I should abstain. Aye.
Okay, and that-
But I agree.
The, the motion carries by a vote of four ayes and one abstention. And moving on to ordinance 2016-10, revising Chapter Five Fiscal Actions, Finances, Disbursements, and Contracts in the Board Policy Manual.
As you know, this is a long-awaited change that the state has been talking about and probably working on for a couple of years in the park code, but basically allows the expenditure limit threshold to go from $20,000 to $25,000. So it does help somewhat. And I think the original idea was to go maybe higher, but this was the negotiated number, and that's what we have today.
We had two other revisions to add to this. Michael, did you want to?
Well, yeah, I had, in looking over this, had asked if it would not be appropriate to add under the, I guess it's paragraph five dot zero four dispersments. It lists a bunch of ways to make payments. Credit card is listed, and I was asking if, at least for clarity, if it wouldn't be helpful to also list P-card, which is very actively used and may technically be a credit card, but-
We're supportive of that. It is a credit card, but it's never hurts to be specific on our-
Board understands from the policy what's going on there.
And we mentioned P-cards later in the policy, so it makes sense to put the words in.
We agree. Go ahead.
And then on down, there's a list of A, B, C, D, just a typo on line D. It should be one commissioner, not one commissioners.
Or S there.
Those are very minor adjustments. Otherwise, I was completely fine with it.
So how do you want to do approval ordinance 2016-10 as amended?
That's what we would recommend.
Okay. Revising Chapter Five Fiscal Actions, Finances, Disbursements, Contracts of the Board Policy Manual.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded, and we should hold a roll call vote on this, beginning at the left.
Aye.
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 Okay, and that carries unanimously with all five commissioners voting. That brings us to action on any new business removed from the consent agenda, and the Administration Department report was requested to be dealt with separately.
I had a question about the Boneyard.
Yes.
We have a map on that. Do, can we put that on the screen?
Oh, sorry.
Pardon me?
The map? Do we have that map?
I think there's one attached in your packet.
Yeah. It looks like we were suggested, possibly by the city, that that would be a great place for a park. And I had a question about 130-01 to 130-005. There's a strip of property along the Boneyard to the north, and an alley to the south. And I believe on that property, there's a few garages, but there's no other buildings on that space. And it's not big enough for any houses probably at this point. I don't think it's advantageous for the Park District to take over that strip of land. I don't think it's advantageous for the park district to take over that strip of land, but there also is going to supposedly be a trail between downtown Urbana and campus, and this is a vital link to that piece. So my thinking is that it would be potentially good for the city to acquire that property, and the east end of that alley, which dead ends, connect that to the south to Springfield, making that into a one-way street for parking, for potential apartment buildings to the south of that street, possibly with a one-way, one-way street, and then parallel parking spaces, which would greatly increase the value of that property for building apartments, and would give us a green strip for the trail.
Right. Several things, I'm not exactly sure with the right of ways and requirements, you know, for parking, it seems very, very tight, and that, that lane does serve some of the back sides of both of those sides of the blocks, so I think you'd have to, you know, try to, to work, you know, that configuration out. Obviously, the floodway is through there too, so for new construction or new uses, I don't know what kind of requirements, you know, would be required, but just basically as kind of a step back overview, I think there's a property owner, Daryl Fausti, that owns several pieces there, that's interested in selling his properties so he can relocate, and so I think he's definitely trying to, you know, market the properties to see if they could be resold and redeveloped in any way, or taken over as, as condition. We're not really exactly sure what would be able to be built there, and so, you know, it's really has, it's something that really should be looked at intensely, I think, and, you know, we've had just a few discussions with city staff, obviously, they've done the Greg Street, Ray Street, you know, boneyard portion, I think from our perspective, you know, they've taken the lead on that, that's pretty large, major floodway infrastructure, seems a bit beyond our, you know, financial and staff capabilities. I think, you know, what's kind of adding to that is, you know, I think the owner would like to sell it to get the money back out of it so that he's free to go do other things.
And in particular, the owner has at least floated the idea of getting, attempting to get the zoning changed.
Right, so that it could have high density.
Increase the potential value of it.
And so I think the real, maybe a couple of things that need to be answered is, you know, what is the footprint for development, what would be, what would be permitted, and then would zoning, you know, actually upsize that, and would the neighborhood support that? I think we've heard there may be some concerns in the neighborhood of increasing the density, you know, there, I think it's R3 now, and the request would go to R5, so, you know, which would suggest multi-unit, you know, apartments or housing, so, you know, could that even be built, would it be permitted, would the zoning allow that? So there's, I'm, I'm calling them hurdles that would need to be overcome, I think we're maybe coming back to the park district, you know, we've been very supportive, we support the greenways and trails, I think, I think all would agree, piecing together a boneyard project is probably a long-term, you know, process.
Right.
And it would be ideal, I think we also agreed and discussed it our last brown bag, if we had a go-to fund that you could, you know, when boneyard properties popped up, buy them, you know, somebody would have to either manage or take down whatever's there and manage the site, that's probably the best way to do that, but right now, a lot of us are struggling without funds, and, you know, so to be able to advance that is, seems to be the, the trick. Now, if the property could be donated, that eliminates the acquisition costs, and then you're looking at demolition and site rehab and things like that, which is not inexpensive, but certainly wouldn't include both sides of that. So I think our recommendation is continue to discuss the possibilities, see what kind of opportunities, but go into it with eyes wide open, you know, what would that cost? What would it mean? Are we the right group to lead that? I think we could be a partner in some ways, certainly Patterson Parklets on the end of that, you know, block, I don't think any of us would be too concerned if it was part of another greenway system or, you know, it'd be great because it's probably not highly utilized, you know, on a daily basis.
Right.
So it's kind of a puzzle and a conundrum, I think, that we're in, you know, it's sort of floodways aren't, we're not encouraging building there anymore, so if you have somebody who wants to build high density, there might be a way to do it, but their footprint could be very tight, and then everything would have to be very vertical, and so, and the other is what kind of neighborhood support in that historic district is there for that kind of increased density?
Right.
My gut would tell me not a lot of support.
No, there was already a city planning meeting last week, I believe, for the opposite end of Main Street, because there's, there's concerns with another landowner who wants to put high density and change, it's the UB2 zoning, I think, so that quarter of University and the rail, where the railroad track intersects.
Yep.
So I, I, I don't think that, there's, there is neighborhood concern about rezoning basically the 800 block of Main Street.
Right.
So.
And I think there's our, the other conundrum.
We don't want a green screen.
I think another conundrum or issue is, you know, there's existing properties that have been there, that may not want to, yeah, how do you convert or get access to that? So it's kind of a puzzle, and I'm not sure at this point if there's an easy solution or a way to do that, but at the same time, we all would agree, we'd love to see a long-term greenway plan that would take advantage of that quarter and make better connectivity and accessibility in that neighborhood. I think, kind of saying it a nice way, we're not big enough necessarily with finances or resources to be that lead, you know, to buy ahead and wait it out, and that could be something you could sit on for a very long time, certainly would be an advantage down the road, but I think that's the struggle we all have, you know, school, city parks of, how do you deal with the here and now, but keep your eye on the vision for the needs of the future? And so I think we're just encouraging more discussion and, you know, waiting to see what the property owner wants to do.
And I think, Bob, you appear to be raising the question of whether just a small sliver of that could be acquired separate from the other properties.
Right, just the, the property between the creek and the, and the alleyway.
Right.
Because you really can't put anything on there except like a garage.
Right, and, yeah, I'm just.
The creek.
Creek is the north end of it.
Gotcha.
Not exactly sure what, you know, the, how those properties are serving, any of the adjacent properties, if they have any connection or if they're just free and you could cut them loose and, you know, everything works with that, that'd certainly be something to ask and, and find out.
Yeah, I would assume since they have a different property number, they're not affiliated with the property in front of it, on the other side of the alleyway.
It could be though, that that's just the parcel too, and how, so I wouldn't.
Yeah, I wouldn't bank on that.
It's being used.
Separately.
Yeah.
Not associated with the property.
Right.
Somebody's storing shit.
Right. I think that's the, you know, these are old sites and it's probably piecemeal and things were probably done or allowed, you know, in different ways or.
Well, it just seems that, you know, going back and trying to regain something like this after something is built is much more costly.
Definitely.
And a number of these lots on the south side of the alley have been cleared, obviously for some kind of reconstruction or resale, and it just seems like that would be a, a small amount of money for the city to put forward to, to be able to secure that part of the trail.
You know, I think we'd like to have more discussion about, you know, what, kind of, what is the community plan for those kind of resources, you know, should we buy ad or work together or pool money or, you know, what's the best way to do that? We haven't really had that full discussion, it just came to us, you know, last week or the week before.
And I think as far as the, the money we have set aside for land acquisition.
Right.
We froze that because we were in financial difficulty, and it's now $50,000, which is not a lot of money, and we'd probably have to wait a year or two, building, continuing to build to that to be able to buy any property, you know, a single family home even.
Right, and this person wants retail value of the land, so I don't see that even, I see that as a non-starter.
Right. I, I, you know, I think there were some loose numbers mentioned, but, you know, it was in the million range or above, so.
But for the whole big.
For the, for the multiple pieces, yeah, not, not just that strip, so I think a lot of it depends on what that owner really intends, but there may be a way to discuss and find a way to, you know, piece something, something together, I think it'd be worth our effort certainly to do that, everybody would support that. Just a reminder too, we had a property at Crystal Lake, a property on Franklin that came to us that was, you know, somebody who's interested in selling, and at that time, we didn't have the resources either, and that was a high priority acquisition, you know, for us, so we had to pass on that. So I, I, you know, in talking with city staff, you know, they wish they also had a, a fund that you could go to, so when they come available, you do exactly what Bob's suggesting and lock it down and get what you need. We're still struggling, I think, with that, but I think, you know, maybe something to see what happens over time, are there interested buyers, are the zoning options, you know, going to go forward or, or not? So I think we're kind of waiting and watching and encouraging more discussion to see what could come of that. I think, you know, there would definitely be some challenges rebuilding there because of the floodway and, and limitations. When we did the Phillips Center, I think our original intent was to try to place both a community center and a gym on that site, and once we started looking at the boneyard setback, the new requirements, quickly we could see there was no way there was enough real estate.
Right.
You know, to meet the setback requirements, but it could be different on that piece of block, I'm not exactly sure, but I, I would imagine it's fairly restrictive for the future.
It's going to be very expensive.
Yeah, because, you know, there's probably shoring up and, you know, civil structural type things you'd have to, you know, take into account too.
Right, and we have to think in terms of more and bigger rains now than we did maybe 20 years ago too, so.
Right, multifamily housing, you'd have to deal with the parking, where do you put the cars, some places are able to go underground, I'm not sure that would work real well here, so it's kind of, again, it's kind of a conundrum puzzle.
Volkswagen's float, what do you mean?
Parking garage slash pool.
You know, a nature-based lot of retention area.
Okay.
Well, that's quite half.
Any, any other?
As long as it's a beast.
Anything else relative to the admin report? Could we, I, I think we normally include that on the consent agenda and, and accept the reports, do we have a motion to accept the administration report?
I move we accept the administration report.
Second.
That's moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that carries unanimously, and we're down now to comments from commissioners, are there any further comments any of the commissioners would like to make?
I will say that we had a very park-oriented summer, my family and me, and every single person that I dealt with was terrific, the programs were fabulous, it, you know, we sit here and listen to how things are going, but until we're dropping our grandkids off at camp, do we have a sense of how it really runs and how it really works, and how good the staff are, and they're, and they're terrific, and the pro, I mean, not, not just on the day-to-day basis, but, you know, the planning, the organization, everything runs really smoothly and really well, and I think the citizens ought to be really happy for the really terrific programming that we, that we do.
I think we'd agree.
Thanks to everybody.
We did have a great summer, we've had some years where it isn't always that way, we have things happen, and we don't like when that happens, but we love it when it works.
Yeah, yeah, but in the pool, I mean, you know, we were blessed with wonderful weather, but the pool was good, the staff at the pool was just incomparably good, yeah, it was great.
Thanks.
Thank you.
We'll pass that on.
Good, please do.
Also, sort of following along that line, Sue Keller is a resident here in Urbana, and she was on the UPDEC committee years ago.
Yep.
And I ran into her earlier, a couple weeks ago, and she was giving us lots of praise as a park district, she indicates that she lives at, near Carl Park, and her grandchildren go to the park, and there was a play structure there that her grandchild likes to play on, however, age-wise, is probably on the younger side, I mean, not within the category of who should be playing on the playground, but she called up Keith and said she had some questions about this, and Keith and I believe Derek and maybe a few other staff went out and actually talked to her, they went to the park, they listened to her concerns, they contacted the manufacturer and found out that since we had purchased it and put it in the park, there's been upgrades on it, so the staff decided to go ahead and put the upgrades on it, instead of telling her, have your stupid kid play on the other playground. So she was excited very much about that kind of reception, and I don't think as many park districts that you could call as a citizen and say, I'm concerned about this playground.
Yeah, yeah.
And then have staff actually come out, listen to you, give you staff time, and then actually put the research into repairing things.
Added some handrails to make it safer for small kids to play on.
On which?
It's the, it's the 512 structure at Carl Park.
Ah, right, okay.
It's one of those, I'm glad that she called moments, because it still met all the guidelines because it was officially new, but, but they'd improved it and were better for it.
Yeah. Terrific, but not surprising.
Right.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, well, I think we have completed our agenda, so I will declare us adjourned.
Great, thanks, everybody.